And zoning and building committee, roll call please.
Alderman Art Woods.
Here.
Alderman Curialy.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderwoman Ames. Alderman Alderwood.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next, I need approval of the minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any corrections to the minutes? Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is report recommendation. We're going to move up the sign variation first, so make a motion for the sign code variation, facilitate installation of the two additional wall signs at ten twenty North Wooddale Road. That is my motion. Any questions? If there are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Now set.
You're done? Okay, next is a report recommendation, special use for multiple unit dwelling building, planned unit development, combined concept with final development plan, site plan review, lot consolidation, and the redevelopment agreement for the apartments at three seventy-two North Wooddale Road, Holiday Property Midwest, Inc. That is my motion, and we do have a presentation, correct?
We do.
Continue.
Thank you, Chairman. I am pleased to be here this evening, presenting to you the holiday proposal for an apartment building at just south of this property, at three seventy-two North Wooddale Road. The applicants are here, representatives from Holiday Development and their consulting team, if we have any questions for them, but I'll run you through a brief presentation, and of course, answer any questions that you have. This evening, they are requesting three zoning approvals from the PCB Committee, and they are: a special use for a multifamily dwelling building, which is required because it's in the TCB zoning district, a special use for a PUD, which includes the concept and the final development plan approval, and the site plan review, along with a lot consolidation. So I think we're all very familiar with where the property is. I don't think I need to explain that. The property is zoned TCB Town Center Business, which really is for commercial or mixed-use development projects. However, a multifamily residential building actually does fall in within the commercial building classification. The property itself is four point five acres. You can see there are two lots on the property, this one and then the larger one, so they will be consolidating that into a single lot. The property was previously occupied by SBT Bank, and that existing building was demolished by the city in two thousand and twenty-three. On the site right now, we pretty much just have remaining surface parking from the SBT Bank and some wooded areas. The proposal for the site looks like what's shown on the screen. The blue is the actual proposed building footprint. It looks like an upside-down U, and they are proposing a four-story building with a hundred and fifty units. You can see the breakdown in this box here on the screen of the different types of units. They will be offering studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and some three bedrooms for the site. They are proposing two hundred and fourteen parking spaces, which includes fifteen single-story garage spaces here in this building along the north property line. They will have interior trash collection and a lot of amenities suitable for the luxury apartments that they will be constructing, including a leasing office, a fitness room, a dog run, pickleball courts, a clubhouse with an outdoor deck feature, and of course, a dog park. The stormwater will be handled on-site, both in an on-site surface detention and an underground stormwater storage vault on the southerly leg of the development, under the parking area. The city engineer has reviewed the proposed plans and has no concerns. There is interior circulation proposed. There will be a sidewalk around the entire building and a sidewalk leading along the east side of this southerly leg down to Commercial Street, where there will be a sidewalk, and they are also proposing a sidewalk or any repairs to the existing sidewalk along Wooddale Road. A traffic impact study was prepared and was reviewed by the city engineer, and there were no concerns raised. And the site, of course, has access to public utilities. Regarding landscaping, I want to focus on the trees, because trees have been an issue for the last couple of developments that were proposed on the site. So there are a hundred and ninety existing trees on the site, and when I say trees, that means trees of six inches or greater, six inches or greater diameter breast height, so about here, here off the ground when you're standing up. A hundred and eighty-seven of those trees will be removed. As you can see, they're really going to be regrading the entire site, so most of the trees, almost all of the trees, will need to come down. There are, of the one hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and thirty-seven of those are considered nuisance trees. Obviously, they don't have to replace dead trees, and so nuisance trees also do not have to be replaced. So fifty trees require replacement. Based on our calculations in the UDO, those fifty trees need to be replaced with two hundred and thirty-nine three-inch trees. That's obviously much more than can be accommodated on-site. Administratively, we are allowed to reduce that with an administrative variation by twenty-five percent, which we have done, and so the number of required replacement trees is a hundred and seventy-nine. They are proposing eighty-two trees on the site, and therefore, they're requesting a deviation for seventy-nine trees, which is that one seventy-nine, that trees that need to be replaced, minus the eighty-two that they will be installing. So that's seventy-nine. I did want to mention that the prior developer, Linmark, who did have plans approved by the city, was required to replace a hundred and thirty-seven trees, and that they were not able to accommodate on-site. They were required to pay for forty off-site trees at six hundred and fifty dollars a tree, but they did receive a deviation for ninety-seven trees, which is higher than the seventy-nine tree deviation that Holiday is requesting. This is a rendering of the proposed development, looking at it from, you know, right outside the police department corner of the building. This is actually the Police Department Drive. They are proposing materials such as masonry, you can kind of see the brick here, and synthetic siding, along with fiber cement panels. They are requesting six deviations, which is actually very much in keeping with the prior development. The first one is driveway offset. So driveways onto public roads are required to either be aligned with driveways across the street or offset at least a hundred and fifty feet. However, they're requesting reduction in that from one fifty to eighty, and that's primarily due to the fact that there are a lot of smaller lots on the east side of the street with driveways that don't align. Street transition, that is a requirement shown. You can see that the deviations are color-coded, so you can follow along on the screen. So the street's transition is the area from the property line into where the parking lots, parking spaces start. So that is required to be thirty feet, but they would like to reduce that to fifteen feet and twenty-two feet, which has been found sufficient, because there's ample space for transition and adequate circulation in the parking area. The parking setback is required to be five feet from the property line, but in three points or three areas along the south property line and the west property line, they are requesting to reduce that to three feet or so, because the property lines are not perpendicular, and obviously, we want to make sure we have sufficient aisle widths for circulation through the property.
Go ahead, Mr. Alderman.
Just to make sure visually I have this in my head, that's side where they're requesting the parking setback deviation. That's the parking lot that abuts next to essentially White Cottage, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so they're still at buffer of driveways. It's not like they're encroaching essentially on another structure, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There will be a buffer.
Thank you.
The next deviations are the replacement trees, as I mentioned. They, well, that's a typo. That should be seventy-nine, replacement trees that they would not have to provide, and shade trees. So there's required to be seven more shade trees in the area highlighted in blue. They are not meeting that requirement, but they are enhancing the area with plenty of shrubs. On this side, they are adjacent to an open area in the, that's owned by the Park District for the beach property, and there is a limited landscaping area along the south property line, as we've already just discussed. The last deviation that they're requesting is for durable materials to be reduced from fifty to twenty-one percent. Now, please remember that in order to calculate this, we do eliminate the glazing, so the window areas, and so the remainder that's left is, you can kind of see on this chart, so the total area, let's look at the east, which is the frontage that is facing Wooddale Road. The surface of that face of the building is about ten thousand square feet, but you remove three thousand square feet or so because of the glass. The remaining is about seventy-five hundred square feet, and thirty-six percent of that will be durable materials such as masonry, and the non-durable materials will be siding. I did want to mention that the prior developer was approved on that same elevation for twenty-two percent of durable materials, while Holiday is proposing thirty-six percent.
Speaking of the windows, I'm just curious, are they offering any soundproofing on that? I know we're very, you know, noisy with the airport, but is there any level of soundproofing on those windows?
That is a technical question that I will defer to the developer, but maybe we could wait until the end of the presentation and then have them stand up and answer any questions that you might have. So the CDC did hold a public hearing for this request on November eighteenth, and they voted to recommend unanimously approval of this project. The redevelopment agreement is not considered by the CDC, but of course, it is considered by PCB Committee and the City Council, and here are some highlights of the redevelopment agreement that was included in your packet. Now, you'll note that this redevelopment agreement is very similar to the one that was approved for Linmark in most respects, because the proposed plan and the layout, the TIF request, what they're proposing to pay for the property are all similar to what was requested by Linmark. Obviously, but for this financial assistance from the TIF, the project would not be possible. The project that they are proposing, they'll be spending forty-two million dollars on that project, on the property, and they are agreeing to purchase the land for one point two million dollars from the city. The TIF incentive, which they are requesting, is six point seven million, again, consistent with the prior developer's request, and we will, and I do want to mention that that'll come directly from the TIF. It's not allowed to come from any other funds, the, you know, for example, the city's general fund or any other fund, and it doesn't come directly from the residents. There, it will be a fee cap of four hundred thousand dollars for permit fees and a hundred and twenty-five thousand for park and school donations. Staff has reviewed that and created some estimates of what those fees will be, and we're comfortable with those caps. And also, that those caps do not count the city's out-of-pocket expenses. Now, those are things passed through costs like consultant reviewers, such as for engineering or our traffic consultant to review the plans, also attorney's fees for creation of the redevelopment agreement. All of those will be reimbursed by the developer and not subject to the cap. The payment of the TIF funds will end in eighteen years, which is twenty forty-two, which is when the TIF ends, or when the city pays the full TIF request, whichever comes first. The project schedule that is outlined in the redevelopment agreement is consistent with the memorandum of understanding that we entered into with the developer earlier this year. The zoning and development and RDA approval is expected by the end of this month, and if that approval happens at next week's meeting, then building permits must be issued no later than August first of next year. They would close on the property after they get the building permit and after they get financing for the property. And so they would need to close on the property, obviously, before they begin construction, which will be no later than September first of next year. The project completion date will be no later than September, two years later, in two thousand and twenty-seven. The RDA has been reviewed by both parties and is substantially complete. We have general agreement on all the substantive terms. So both the CDC and staff are recommending approval, subject to four conditions. These are standard conditions that we put on just about every development, such as you've got to comply with the approved plans and the staff memo and the CDC minutes, final engineering approval. You have an ongoing obligation to screen the rooftop units. Like, we don't believe they'll be visible, but if they are, after the building goes up, then they have to screen those. And of course, they have an ongoing obligation to maintain the landscaping that's shown on the approved landscape plan in perpetuity. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, maybe we can start with that, and if we need to bring the developer in on those, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ames, you want to?
Well, that was my question about just the soundproofing, just with the proximity, with, I don't care if the building offers that.
Sure. Hi there. I'm Mike Doyle with Holiday Properties. You know, not to just hedge into, but I think we'd want to probably study kind of what the sound would be on the property to see kind of where it would be necessary. We've done it on our other projects. We have projects where we're fifty yards from the Metro. That's kind of flying by, and so on. Those apartments that abut the train, we'll do that. We'll put kind of higher-rated sound windows. I think for this project, before committing to doing that in all the windows, we probably want to have a better understanding of, you know, how loud it's going to get and would that be necessary. But we certainly don't want to build something where it's going to be so noisy people don't want to live there, or that would be self-defeating and hurt us. So we'd like the opportunity to kind of study that further once we go a little further on in design and drawings and spec appropriate windows for whatever the sound level will be for the area.
Thank you. Yeah, it's fair to think about it now, because it does get noisy.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that's a good point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Alderman Artie Woods. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I know who you meant. Are they, the Holiday, not going to give a presentation?
At PCB meetings, we generally don't have the petitioner do a presentation, so I told them they didn't have to do one.
So they wasted their time bringing all their questions. Why should we know? Anyway. All right, so I'll dive into the questions. I'll reiterate Alderwoman Ames' concern about the windows, that's certainly, and I think there is a code or some guidance put out by ONCC, which was adopted by Wooddale for sound. You might want to check into that. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure there was some stuff on that that was their way to get around all the new properties being able to come online, that they would have to do it. I wanted to speak to the, which is why I wanted to see the presentation, to see the comparative of the other communities when I watched what was online versus the end product that we're getting. And so my questions deal more with the design and the facade that's on there. You know, I'm a big proponent of the masonry. We like to use, what were some of the terms? Hard surfaces, what was the? Durable surfaces. I don't know what the definition of that is. Could you explain that to me? As it relates to the material going on this building.
So they do have their materials with them this evening. They can show you those. Their presentation from the CDC, you said you saw it. If they were going to give one, it would be the same one as that.
Yeah, but I wasn't there and I didn't get to ask questions, and in time makes a difference, but we'll debate that later. So masonry and durable goods are similar, but when we're using those percentages, are those percentages broken out as masonry? What's that number? Because if we're skewing it with part of its timber tag, part of its, you know, cement panels?
Yeah, I guess so. I'll let, we have Chris Wallace, our architect here, and I'll let him speak a little bit to the exact materials we're proposing for the building, but I will say, just generally speaking, and again, Chris can touch to this with some more specifics. He's designed several of those other projects you saw in other communities. This is very in line with projects we've done in other communities in DuPage County over the past few years, really in all respects, in terms of amenities we're planning for the building, you know, kind of how we'll amenitize the units themselves with finishes and whatnot. Really, the one difference from this site compared to some of our others is it's a bigger site, so we're able to largely surface park it with that garage on the north side, whereas some of our other sites have been on really tight, you know, point-eight acres in the downtown, so we've been required to go underground for parking. But as far as materials in general, look and feel of the building, this is very similar to many of the other towns, that projects we built in other towns. But I'll let Chris speak to some of the materials.
Yeah, just to talk about, and actually, we've gone back and forth a little bit on exactly durable materials, so I share your. But, yeah, no, and the building, to me, is all durable materials. It's, you know, you've mentioned TimberTech, which is synthetic siding. It's used on deck boards. It's a lifetime. You never have to stain it. You never have to paint it. You know, she had the other percentages up there. The masonry is real, you know, brick. You can see some of the samples here. The stone here is, it is a cultured stone, so it is, you know, put on like a tile around, you know, the, where you see the black, kind of the main features of the buildings. So the whole, the whole building, to me, is durable materials, but I know, you know, there's a little bit of a, you know, what does that actually mean in these other counties or other cities that would consider this all durable materials? So it's kind of a sleight of hand, but the east-facing is thirty-six percent, you know, what you'd consider masonry. You know, so the main facade, you don't have to pull up the other slide there to remind you what the other ones went, but they're around twenty-two for the entire building, if you took the average of it.
Go ahead.
Drilling down, doing a comparative of the other properties that you presented, I think it was?
Quincy Station, yeah, there's.
Lombard.
Right.
Couple of the other ones. They appeared to have two things that this building doesn't have, and it's a nice building, so this is probably be deemed a little picky. But on the other buildings, we had a little more differentiation of the front facades in that the patios or balconies were more enclosed or surrounded by walls as opposed to, you know, just.
Projecting.
Projected off the face of the building. So I view that as, this is a lesser, again, not to detract. It's a nice-looking building.
Yeah.
That, along with the other ones, all appeared to have more masonry coverage.
It depends on which one you're looking at. The one in Lombard, I don't think is, you know, too much, too far off of this one. There is a lot of fiber cement siding on that one as well. But, you know, each building is different. We design them for the area and, you know, working with Holiday, you know, on what this, you know, building should look like, and, you know, these are the materials that we chose, so. I don't know if you can go to the three-D one, Stacy. Back to that slide. I think that shows it better. But just the, you know, the design, more modern design is becoming more, you know, more popular in, for these types of buildings. We did have, you know, we have gone back and forth with the balconies, a couple of different iterations on this, and these were ultimately the ones we worked out with staff and, you know, developer, that these were the preferred ones. We had modeled them different ways and looked at them, so this is what we, you know, felt was the best for this site, for this look.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time, I think it is Quincy Station in downtown Westmont.
Yeah.
I was trying to find my pictures, but having troubles. That's kind of what struck me as well. It looks, it's a stunning property, right? So what I was looking for is more data on what those durable materials, like what that difference is between that property there and what you did there, as opposed to the mix of material used on this rendering. Do you guys have that comparison, or could you speak to that?
I don't, I don't have that. That was a different slideshow that we don't have.
I don't, unfortunately.
Stacy has it in her record.
Question while they're doing that?
Yeah.
Is there any plan to have kind of a commercial little area like you do at Quincy Station, where you have that restaurant that's right there?
We do not, this, yeah, for this property. This is a, this is a four-story building, where those are five-story. I have to get, yeah. That has, it's a platform construction with four stories on top, and which is really what you kind of need for retail, to kind of accommodate that. This, you know, the parking and that, we really would not have the room for parking, and it was never, yeah, part of the original program for this was to have, you know, the commercial or retail space. Yeah, go ahead.
Backtracking a little bit, the balcony is kind of the cantilevered hanging balconies. These are actually similar to what we've used at Westmont. We largely have these in the Lombard project, Lilac Station. We've also used these kind of same buildings. As Chris said, we toyed around with different ways of doing the balconies. You know, one version of the building had kind of support beams going all the way down to the ground, but we thought it just started to look a little crowded and kind of a little messy that way. And so that's how we kind of landed on this, is the preferred route for the building, and thought it matched the rest of the aesthetic and design.
Chris, finish my third point. Sorry. So, sorry, with the rendering that you show though, is that still the entrance? Would that still come from the south side of Wooddale Road, so closest, I guess, to the?
So this view, you're looking at it from kind of the northeast perspective, really kind of outside the, so the idea is the main lobby, the main entrance, would be this kind of northeast corner of the building.
Northeast corner, okay.
Yeah. And we added kind of this similar, Chris, I don't know what you call this kind of feature, that kind of makes the corner a little more dramatic, but we added one of those to the southeast corner as well. So folks who are driving north on Wooddale Road from Irving Park Road have kind of a very nice first view of the building, where they have kind of that.
So if you're saying northeast, the northeast, so if you're saying northeast corner, then you're talking coming from, well, you know, the area.
Yeah.
Are you talking about coming from the junior high, because that would be the northeast corner? Or are you talking about coming from the train station and coming home? Because that's really where I saw this, right? I take the train, I get off the train, I'm walking by White Cottage. Am I looking at that, or am I?
You'd be looking at this southeast.
That's, okay.
I shouldn't have done that.
Sorry. That's why, okay. It's that far corner on the far left. That's what I thought, okay. And so you're showing it a different perspective, so.
We do have a rendering of that.
We have a southeast rendering, I don't think.
That's from the police department, is what you're looking at. You're standing on the police department driveway.
Right. I'm saying I saw a different rendering where he just said, like, the way you pointed it.
We do have a rendering looking up as you're coming.
Okay. I'm thinking from the train. I'm thinking of all your prospective tenants, right? Like, that's, to me, that'll look different and so.
And that was actually, sorry to interrupt, that was actually a recommendation from staff, that we have that same kind of feature also on that southeast corner for exactly the reason you said, that if you're coming from the train north on Wooddale Road, you have a very nice kind of first view impression of the building.
But the lobby would be the northeast corner?
That's right.
So if I'm coming from the train, I'd have to walk up past your building and come in that way?
Well, if you're going, I mean, there'd be other interways into the building. But if you're going into the main lobby, then, then yes. That's correct.
Okay. I don't need to see the other rendering. I had that original one, but I was just curious. Could it look a little different, Stacy?
Well, if it is on here, it might be helpful, just, I believe this presentation had both renderings. A little further down.
So that looks like verticals.
So, yeah, this is the northeast perspective. This is, this is coming from the train.
That's what I thought.
And this is kind of the inside of the U, again, I won't touch it. This is the inside of the U here that becomes kind of the outdoor courtyard.
That's what I was trying to see, because relative to like the open space, the park space, the White Cottage, that was what I was trying to.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Great, thank you.
Can you go back to that ITESCO one? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know which one it is. This one?
So that is, may look like a lot of brick, but the brick actually is here. This is all fiber cement siding. The whole inside of this U is fiber cement siding. This is brick, this is brick, but then the rest of the building is actually fiber cement siding. So, you know, we do try to put the, more of the masonry, you know, towards the public streets. And then the back of the building, this actually has an alley, and then it's up against another building. So that's where, you know, typically these do transition, if you were to go to, you know, any of these other ones.
And I get that.
Yeah.
I like the unity of the masonry going in the vertical columns, even though they're not all at the same horizontal line, but you got some differentiation in there, but there's some more consistency. And I would argue that the whole facing, whether that's some faux stone finish around the lower storefronts, I guess, assume that is.
Yeah, that's like limestone.
In general, that, that's a greater percentage of masonry on that building, as I believe it was on the other three verticals. I don't know that as a fact, just visual observation.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends on where you're looking at it from the building.
And so because that's a bigger building, on a bigger site, I don't want it to look cheap?
Yeah, no, and I don't, you know, none of the materials we're, you know, proposing are cheap. They may not fall in the line of the, yeah, of, you know, what everyone considers, you know, the durable materials, that's why I say. I don't want to get caught up in that. I actually think the synthetic timbers actually cost more or as much as the brick in, when you put the whole system together.
So why would you not opt to do some more of the masonry?
Well, they work, you know, they work for this elevation.
But you could vary the masonry too, right?
Yeah, we did. And we've played with all the materials. You know, we actually, we have increased it since we've been doing the presentation. So we did come up, and like you said, we are actually higher than the last developer, I think, who had proposed the.
Right. I heard that. The last developer had a swimming pool and bocce ball courts and a party room. Do we have those?
No, we don't. That building didn't get built either. But.
That was my point.
Yeah. I'd also say, you know, and this is, I think, kind of a credit to Stacy and staff, you know, we, the elevations were really labored over. You know, I think I have six versions in the file. You know, we kind of, we rebuilt them several times to try and kind of take feedback. So not to say it's the end-all, be-all, has zero room for improvement whatsoever, but we did spend a lot of time and get a lot of input to kind of come up with the building that we proposed today. And, you know, we're proud of it. We think it's a really nice looking building and that people enjoy living here, so.
Arty Woods?
Just one question, it might be for Director Springer, but during CDC, I think there was only one citizen who came forward, if I remember correctly, and they had major concerns about the traffic study. They had just bought a property across the street on Wooddale Road, and he had mentioned some concerns. And I know you mentioned that a traffic study was done and we had no concerns. Is that a new traffic study, or is that the same one from the previous developer? And maybe if you could just comment on that, just for that person wanting some kind of follow-up, I believe?
Sure. So you're correct, one person did have some concerns. We spoke at length with him, both staff and elected official who was in attendance, and the developer, to answer all of his questions and make sure that, you know, we had, we had addressed everything that he had questions about. We did require a new updated traffic study since two years had passed. And DuPage County also required it because they have to approve the locations of the curb cuts. So the, the traffic, here, I can actually.
Sorry to interrupt, Stacy, actually, our traffic consultant is here, if helpful. We could have Steve speak to that as well.
Hold on one second. So this is, I might have to go down through it again. So this is the comparison of the traffic proposed numbers for both the bank, when it was in existence, the Limmark Apartments, and these Holiday proposed apartments. And you can see the numbers, the total numbers for the peak PM hour and the peak AM hour. The proposed development is less than what was previously approved for the apartments and what was previously existing. Did you want to add anything you can certainly add?
Good evening. Steve Cork, current Ericsson Engineering. Yeah, we basically did a brand-new traffic study. I was here, worked on the Limmark project, but the study before you, as part of this application, we redid the traffic counts, as Stacy mentioned, they were several years old, and updated it with the new land plan and did a brand-new traffic study.
Great. And it's, I just had one to follow up.
Go ahead.
A little bit different question, but in that rendering, it looks like the grade kind of drops down from the police driveway. Is that just a optical illusion, or is the grade pretty even?
I'm not sure where.
From that view where we were looking at the police station driveway?
It's pretty flat.
Be a northeast.
Yeah, exactly, right there. It looks like.
Yeah, it does look.
It looks like it dropped, falls off there. Is that just?
I don't believe so. I think that's just an illusion on that, but I don't have the grading plan.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we've, our preliminary engineering has a grading plan. We could pull that up and look at it. But I think, I see what you're seeing, and I think that's just sort of a weird.
And I'm not an expert in this.
Yeah, I think it's just a weird quirk of the rendering.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Mayor? Yeah. Right now, there is a little slope that goes south.
Okay.
From the driveway to the existing driveway where the bank was. So, I mean, it's very minimal. It's not two feet or anything like that.
Got it, understood.
I've got a question on the vault for the stormwater. What's the capacity of the, as far as the water?
You know, I, we, our civil engineering consultant, Spaceco, is not here tonight. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm not, that's not my area of expertise to answer that question. I do know they, you know, they did the kind of the whole stormwater management report, so I could get back to you on that. But, but I know they sized the vault and they sized the detention pond for the site and kind of for this size of parking lot. And it actually, it shifted a little from kind of our first conceptual plan to once they got into it and did their preliminary engineering. So I know they've sized that, you know, appropriately for what we're proposing here.
Have you guys chosen a name yet for the?
Uh, working on it. Yeah, we, we had one that, that we liked, but I think we need to shake the snow globe and come up with a new one, so. We're working on it.
Yeah, Dellwood would be a nice one.
What's that?
Dell, Dellwood?
I like it, yeah. It's tricky.
Okay, any more questions? Art Woods, got to get that right.
This one, again, stormwater related, the language used was the, our engineers had no concern. What does, what does that mean? Did they approve what they're doing, or the, is it meeting?
I don't have the, the exact language from the email, but from my recollection, they were only required to provide preliminary engineering at this point. Final engineering is prepared before building permit. And what they showed conceptually was that they could meet the stormwater requirements. And our engineers said that nothing further was needed at this time, that they'd be required to meet all stormwater requirements of DuPage County before we'd issue them a building permit.
Yeah, so next is going from here to finished product. Part of this might be staff questions, but as I just found out, right, we're still working on getting the permit and that's supposed to be in August of next year, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, so the, the dates in the redevelopment agreement are complete entitlements and redevelopment agreement by the end of this year, December 31st. Obtain a permit by August 1st and break ground by September 1st. So at this point, and Stacy just mentioned this, at this point, we've done preliminary engineering, we've done conceptual architecture. To get a permit, you know, obviously now we need to go create the full set of construction documents, just order of operations. We don't do that until we know we have an approved project. So, you know, not to be presumptive, but if we were to be approved tonight and a week from now, we would immediately launch full, you know, full civil. We'd launch our architects to complete the full construction documents and move as quickly as we could to get in for permit, you know, as fast as we could.
Right. Which is why I would have rather had a more robust conversation on that, because this is still the development end of it. But, so when, when are they purchasing the property? When are they locked in, right? Because, and again, I'm not you guys, but this is the third, third ride that we've taken on the merry-go-round. So while this is a wonderful looking building and it's a great conversation we're having, I just want the building built, I think everybody would echo the same thing.
With the reason?
Well.
Without compromise?
Without compromise in the building. I, my question is, when, when do we have skin in the game? Because everything up until then is conversation.
Yeah, well, I'd say, yeah, and I understand you guys have, you've heard this song before, so I get it and I understand the question. You know, getting to this point has been a substantial amount of time and investment with our consultants. When we signed the redevelopment agreement, I don't want to, I don't want to say the wrong thing, but I think it's 100, I should know, a significant amount of earnest money goes down when we, when we sign the redevelopment agreement. So that becomes even more skin in the game. And then again, we'll launch our full architecture and full civil immediately. So we're, we've already spent a good deal of money. When we sign the redevelopment agreement after approvals, we'll put down a big chunk of earnest money and then be spending more and more money with consultants. The plan is that we will actually purchase the land pretty much commensurate with construction starting. And that was large, not to speak for staff and the municipality, but, you know, they didn't want us to buy the property and then potentially not build a building. So that was, that was intentional, that we closed on the land right when we're able to pick up our permit and start construction.
No, I, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't do it.
Yeah, sure.
Numbers stick in my head, so I think we, we put down $150,000 within 45 days of the RDA approval. We signed the RDA and $150,000 earnest money. And then at building permit, we also submit, I think it's another $100,000. Am I right?
I was reviewing the RDA today, and I believe it's 125 within 45 days of approval, and then another 75. I think we landed on $200,000.
Okay, yeah.
Then while you're the number guy up there with the good memory, so why aren't we locking in the financing? Because that's a key piece.
When, when we have the construction drawings done, we'll get a GMP price from our contractor, and we'll be able to close on a loan with our financing, financial partner, a lender.
And that's pre?
And that'll be, that'll be, that'll be probably, you know, July. Yep.
We've, you know, we've had preliminary conversations with a handful of lenders. There's, you know, three or four lenders in the area who we work with regularly. They're already aware of this project. We've already talked to them about it. No one on a conceptual plan is going to give us a loan commitment today. You know, they want to know that we have a full set of plans and that we have a firm GMP price with the contractor. But we have already started having those conversations with the lenders, but it'll be much closer to construction starting when we actually close on the loan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, you had a question? Yeah, so to get the permits issued by 8/1, that means they're turning in plans end of June, I take it, right? No?
Much before that.
Oh. Need more time than 30 days? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, some of that depends on the review process, but, you know, we would, our goal would be, and again, this isn't in the RDA, but I mean, our, our goal would be to be turning in plans in, in May, you know, mid to late, mid to late May. Because, you know, typically there's a process where you're getting comments and revising things and things like that. So we'd want to be sure we turned in plans, giving us enough time to, to respond to things that come up.
Right, in case they're incomplete.
Well, yes, yeah, that as well.
Okay, questions? Alderman Messina, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that the "I love Wooddale" pin is a great touch.
I didn't even realize I was wearing it.
Kudos to you there.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
That's a great move. That's all.
Okay. So we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. And also, that motion in a second is to, is to include the, the four conditions, correct?
Well, it's, it's all part of it.
Okay, so roll call?
Alderman Airwoods?
No.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalana?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is items to consider at future meetings. We have the Benwire 3, the planning unit development coming up January 9th. And if we have any other items to consider, if we don't, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Saka?
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting. Let the note taker note that the same elected officials and staff are present. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 14th, 2024. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, we only have one item tonight, approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and V3 Companies LTD for the Mary Jane Lane Drange Study in an amount not to exceed $59,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Director Lang?
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. After we completed the Ward Two and Three Underground Detention System a couple of years ago, we decided that we would shift focus over to Ward One and focus on a few areas of localized flooding in that ward, while monitoring the improvements that were completed in Wards Two and Three and still monitoring the need for southern improvements in that area as well. By all measurements, the, the improvements that were made around Potter and Prospect are working. There has still been some localized street flooding in the southern area of that ward. When we heard that the Forest Reserve was planning some improvements to their golf course, we reached out to them to see if there was an opportunity to combine our efforts to implement some stormwater infrastructure on their project. As it turns out, they'll be excavating near the intersection of Mill Road and Mary Jane Lane to provide some fill in other areas of the golf course. This obviously presents the opportunity to, just a little bit off here, there we go, to provide some stormwater detention for us if need be. So they are proposing to let us kind of piggyback onto their engineering agreement and they'll do a hydraulic analysis of this area to show the existing conditions as well as proposed conditions if we were able to utilize this area for extra detention. If not, they also propose providing two other alternatives, you know, including underground detention, increased storm sewer, conveyance sizing and the like that would help mitigate the issue.
Has there ever been analysis in that area before, prior years?
No detailed analysis that I'm aware of, no.
Alderman Catalana?
Yeah, so this is not going to fix the whole problem, it's just going to take care of pretty much Mary Jane, correct?
So the majority of the street flooding that we see in this area is at the end of the system. So everything in these streets drains towards the center of the street and it goes to the middle of these houses where it runs north to Gilbert, to the ComEd easement. So where we see the flooding is near the end of the system, typically down here in Mary Jane and Mill and here on Arlene. So by providing some overflow relief to these areas, instead of it flowing into the street, it'll flow into this basin area here. So it should eliminate the majority of the issues that we see in this area.
But also those pipes need to be upsized, correct?
Likely, those pipes were sized using old rainfall data. That data has since been updated, so it's likely that they would need to be increased to meet the new requirements.
So first, we're going to see what this detention's gonna, how it's going to affect the area. So if it doesn't take care of the major flooding and especially in Gilbert, then we have to look at upsizing the pipes, correct?
It's likely that upsizing the pipes will be included with the detention basin. They'll look at that as well in their modeling.
Good.
Yep.
Any other question? Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Aims?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalana?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, a vehicle purchase on January 9th. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add to a future meeting? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Let the minute taker note the same elected officials are present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 14th, 2024 for the Finance Administration Committee.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments? If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. I do have three reports and recommendations. The first is the fiscal year 2024 audit report. It looks like it has a little something to say.
Maybe not.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so as we are required by statute, we have to do, present the findings of the audit report to, to the city council. So we are again within that timeframe, within that window again this year. As the past couple of years, we have Mr. Nick Bava here with us from Sickich. He's going to do the majority of the presentation as soon as I figure out where the bookmarks button is in this invented format of PDFs. If I, if I, be okay to turn it over to Mr. Bava, he can start talking while I figure this out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council for having me here tonight. As Brad, as Brad mentioned, my name's Nick Bava. I am a principal with Sickich and the principal that oversaw the city's audit, here to report tonight on the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2024. So as part of every audit of the city, we have a handful of deliverables here before you tonight. Of that, of those deliverables, we're presenting the annual comprehensive financial report, which is the large audit document. We have a, a grant compliance, a GATA cipher report, I'll touch on that here shortly. TIF compliance reports for TIFs number one and number two, compliance reports required for a TIF fund of the city that exceeds $100,000 in aggregate property tax revenues. We also have issued city council communication and management letter, and then we've assisted in the filing of the Comptroller's Annual Financial Report. As far as the opinions we've issued, just, just highlighting that they've all are noted as unmodified opinions. I'll touch on the basic financial statement opinion here and show you that document shortly, but just noting that of these deliverables, we've issued unmodified clean opinions. So those are the, the types of opinions you want as part of an annual audit and the highest level of assurance relative to those, to those reports. So just an, an agenda, just to cover kind of the, the overall highlights, taking you through some items in the annual comprehensive financial report. We'll start with the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificates are reflective of the April 30th, 2023 report. The, the city goes above and beyond the minimum reporting requirements required by the state, required by generally accepted accounting principles. By issuing this annual comprehensive financial report, what makes it comprehensive is some additional information on the introductory section as well as the statistical section, which includes a lot of great trend data, financial trends, demographic trends, debt trends, things like that. So it's really prepared in the spirit of full disclosure for folks interested in the city's financial position. This is the 37th award issued by the Government Finance Officers Association. I work with a lot of municipalities, 37 is a pretty big number, so the city's been doing this for a while in terms of submitting to the GFOA, so I'd just like to call that out. So once this is submitted and, and reviewed, we'd expect the city to receive their 38th certificate for this audit. Next section I'll touch on is the Independent Auditors Report. So I mentioned the unmodified opinion. This is the, the main opinion on the financial statements and the, the overall document in and of itself. So the opinion is front and center there. I've highlighted some of the, some of the key information that will, that relates to the, you know, the level of assurance. I won't read it verbatim, but what those two top paragraphs mean are that we've issued that unmodified opinion, which means that it's a clean opinion and that these financial statements can be relied on. Again, it's the highest level of assurance from an audit perspective that we can provide. Following the opinion section is a change in accounting principles section. This, this paragraph may or may not be in an audit document any given fiscal year. As always, at the onset of an audit, we're reviewing new accounting standards that are issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. We have to determine if those standards apply from a financial reporting perspective. Last year, I was here discussing lease accounting as it related to the impacts on the city's financial statements. This year, similar to leases, this standard, GASB Statement Number 96, touches on the right to use software subscriptions, so vendor, vendor, third-party software subscriptions that extend beyond greater than one year. So there is a lot of software for any organization. We have to evaluate the right to use those softwares and if those particular agreements extended beyond greater than one year, we had to value the right to use those assets over that particular period of time. So when it came time to looking at the city's portfolio and those related softwares, the flock safety cameras that were newly issued were multi-year software subscriptions that were of material value and as a result are now reported on the city's financial statements as a right-to-use asset, followed by an offsetting subscription liability based on the terms of that contract.
Question.
Alderman Messina?
So maybe I missed it. So what would constitute a multi-year agreement? Is that, what would trigger that being part of?
Yeah, so as part of the standard, they made any contract that is 12 months or less exempt. And what we're seeing in, in practice is that a lot of software contracts in, in term and length really don't exceed that 12-month period. But in the case of those that do happen to exceed, you know, beyond that 12-month window, where there's no cancellation options, no termination options, and any exemptions, if you will, as far as what, as part of what GASB allowed in this standard, wouldn't apply.
Follow.
But, but, I mean, I work with the federal government, so like budgets are approved, right, they're option years and I sell software, right? So I cannot do a multi-year agreement with the federal government. It's one year with option years. So, I mean, it's like the complete opposite logic, because I'm sure the state and local governments work the same way. Like you have, Brad has no guarantee that we're going to approve a budget in year two to fund the flock cameras or any of subscriptions. We could cut off Microsoft 360 tomorrow. So I guess I've not following how that, that's not your rule, I guess, it's just the logic is crazy to me.
Yeah, and it's, it's fair. I think when we look at these accounting pronouncements, they are, they are pretty complex and in terms of trying to, you know, make that explainable to the users of the financial statements, you're, you're asking fair questions. We point specifically to what the contract states between the city and, and the provider of these flock safety cameras. And what we, we do is we look at those key items, the length of the contract, are there any cancellation, termination options without cause? Both parties have to have that termination option in order to say, yes, this, if, if either party can walk away at any point without cause, then it doesn't apply. But to your point, you know, say for the, for example, this, the city's accounting system, that's a, that's a subscription or, and things like that. That might be year-to-year payments, but in reality, you're going to likely be using that software for 15, 20, you know, 30 years. Even though it's kind of a substance over form thing, we are, we are required to look directly at the contract and say, even though the city's likely to use that software for the next 20 years, they're really just contractually obligated to pay for, for one year and then, you know, go.
Do you consider the, contractually, we would just have to pay one year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's fair.
I hope that clarified it.
It, it does. I just, what you just said answered it. Contractually, we only have to pay one year. That liability's not a three-year agreement or a multi-year, we're not being held to that standard, just what we contractually have to pay year to year, because if we decide not to fund year two, technically, from what I understand with the agreements, you got, we could walk, we, the city, could walk away from an agreement. Yeah, okay. Thank you. That does answer my question. Thank you.
So as always, with these new accounting standards, we work, we work with Brad and the finance department to make sure that these financial statements reflect what GASB is asking. Our opinion on these financial statements isn't modified with respect to these new standards, but pointing out, it is a complex standard and it does take a lot of time to obtain all of the software contracts. So it's a lot of homework and we certainly appreciate the level of effort, you know, on, on the city side to work with us to make sure that we're complying with what GASB requests. So this is the Independent Auditors Report on the basic financial statements. The next section is the Independent Auditors Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting. So this is required by government auditing standards and these two pages may or may not necessarily be included in a given fiscal year audit. It really is connected to the level of grant spending that might occur this year. So if the, if the city expends greater than $500,000 in state and federal grant funds during the fiscal year, they're required to undergo a certain compliance test. And this was imposed by the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, so it's also known as, as GATA. So on page number six here, we had to do some additional tests as it relates to what government, government auditing standards requires. As part of those additional tests, we didn't identify any instances of non-compliance or other matters that were required to be reported. And I do want to point out that the thresholds from a grant spending perspective were exceeded as part of the $3 million DCEO grant on infrastructure improvement. So that was a state-funded grant. Costs were incurred in fiscal year '24, revenues received in fiscal year '24 on that. Next section I just want to point out is the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is a 16-page section prepared by Brad. It's, it's a great section that I always like to point out to, to council as far as your overall review is concerned of the audit document. There's a lot of statements and schedules in this audit report, in any audit report, and this is management's opportunity to provide some narrative and some context in terms of what occurred during the fiscal year, certain reasons for increases, decreases compared to fiscal year '23. But 16 pages is a lengthy, well-thought-out, thorough MDNA, and I just wanted to, you know, always mention that this is a great section to kind of supplement your review, you know, with every, every, every year. Into the financial statements themselves, the statement of net position here is the city's consolidated balance sheet. It's recorded on the full accrual basis of accounting, so this really most closely resembles that of a, a commercial for-profit entity in that it consolidates all of the city's short-term and long-term activities. So your short-term activity would be your funds, your long-term activity would be your capital assets, the city's long-term debt, things of that nature that are required under full accrual accounting. So these statements are required by GASB in order to obtain that unmodified opinion, and it really shows how the city is doing economically. So they're not the short-term statements, they're more of the, the long-term prospective financials. So this is your long-term balance sheet, the statement of net position. Following is the statement of activities, which is the income statement, the long-term income statement, just showing if the city's better off economically compared to the prior year. So it's organized by governmental activities, which are the city's general fund, motor fuel tax fund, capital projects funds, and then the business-type activities, which would be the, the utilities of the city, the water sewer, the sanitation and the commuter parking. So again, required by GASB, the more interesting funds and the funds that, you know, council looks at on a month-to-month basis are the governmental funds which follow those statements. These are recorded on the modified accrual basis of accounting and are, again, are what you're more familiar with, is the focus on these statements is fund balance. So they don't include any of those long-term assets, long-term liabilities. It more reflects what can be collected within one year, what can be paid within one year. So these statements are organized by major funds. Major fund of, of the city is a fund that has a high volume of assets, liabilities, revenues or expenditures. So generally, the city's major funds are the general fund, capital projects fund. Land acquisition was a major fund this year and the TIF district number one fund was a major fund. So this, this represents your assets, liabilities and fund balances. Following, this section is the governmental funds income statement. This is on the same basis of accounting, so this is your revenues over expenditures which equate to changes in fund balance for the fiscal year. So each of these major funds, I will point out, also have a supplemental budget versus actual schedule further down in the report. Any fund that's budgeted, there are supplemental schedules here to kind of drill down on that detail if you're interested in looking more from a budget versus actual perspective. So overall, again, this just shows you your, your changes in fund balance, revenues over expenditures, less any transfers in or out or other financing sources or uses. Next section, the last statement I just wanted to cover is the same, same statement from an income statement perspective, perspective, but just for the utility funds of the city, so the, the enterprise funds. Water and sewer is a, is a major fund and then your non-major enterprise funds are the combination of the sanitation and commuter parking. So again, overall, it shows your operating income, plus or minus any non-operating expenses and revenues, transfers in and out, and then any capital contributions. So overall, I just, you know, wanted to point out, the audit went extremely smooth this year. We're here well on time. The city's given through December 31st, 2024 to file their reports in a timely fashion, so they were filed middle of November. So we're well on time in terms of what the state requires. I certainly appreciate Brad, Carla, the team that we worked with as part of this audit. City's very professional, very responsive, and we appreciate their partnership. So as it relates to any of the audit deliverables, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I certainly appreciate the, you know, that you let me present here on the audit report tonight. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mayor, please.
Yeah, Brad, I know I called you on this. Can you explain, and the general fund, so we're just under 50% now, so under six months, right? Just as to why that was? I know you gave me an explanation, but.
So when we look at and kind of peel back the layers on the general fund, there were some expenditure overages when you look at budget versus actual. Legal expenses were just around $300,000 over budget. There were some professional services within the community development department that were over budget by about $120,000. You also have to factor in the capital expense relative to the software subscriptions that we talked about, so that inflates, you know, the, the overall expense. But in terms of, you know, kind of looking at, at revenues and taxes, those generally were pretty stable compared to prior years. There is some context in the Management's Discussion and Analysis that touches on, you know, more specific performance within fines and fees, charges for services and things like that. But yeah, from a 50%, like that. But yeah, from a 50%, I think the, the current reserve is right around 45, 44, 45%. So just a little bit shy of that, that recommended policy.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do we need to vote on this, or just, we're just hearing the presentation? Dr. Wilson?
Yes, we need to, next week, that resolution accepting the findings of the audit. So we would need a motion to recommend or accept this of the audit at council meeting next week.
Okay, so just today was questions, answers?
Make a motion.
Need a motion to accept the audit, which we then presented on next week's council meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the audit. Alderman, Sino, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. Just thinking back of the, the multi-year. So does it, you kind of alluded to it again, right, at the end? Like, is it, clearly, we're not in a bad situation. Does it impact it in any negative way that we're doing these multi-year agreements?
No. So what, what GASB is really trying to look at, and you can, you can really look back to 10 years ago when the, when the pension standards changed and the obligations associated with police pensions, fire pensions, you know, IMRF, those liabilities were required to be reported on your balance sheet. GASB is really focused on trying to identify any and all obligations that could be reported to the users. So when, from an accounting perspective in this example, what's happening is your balance sheet is reflecting an asset to use that software, offset by a liability, to just reflect what the city is paying over the life of that contract. So
Okay.
Your, your cash outflow, your income statement's not changing. It's more so just showing, here are the obligations out there relative to this accounting standard.
Transparency.
Exactly.
Okay.
It's just, you know, trying to explain, it's called, they're called speedas, trying to explain speedas to, you know, to council, to folks that it's just, it takes time and explanations. So yeah, they're, they're great questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman, Artie Wood?
Probably for Brad. The first item you mentioned is $300,000 over in attorney's fees or legal, or was that right? Is that, obviously, no year is the same. Is that just unforeseen things that come throughout the year that we cannot budget for, or how does that happen?
Dr. Wilson?
Sure, thank you. So I mean, kind of looking through it, there was a lot of money, relatively speaking, spent on, you know, the Rotary 3 development, the annexation, getting that project going. As Alderman Woods noted, this is our third rodeo with a developer on the apartment complex. So there was money put into that over the past, during fiscal '24. You know, the city's more aggressive now in their adjudication processes, taking people and trying to get compliance on that. So a lot of these monies, you know, especially from the adjudication and some of the development stuff, will flow back to the city at some point. But it's just, it was a confluence of timing that just wound up having legal be a little bit higher than expected last year. So not any particular thing, but just a, a number of projects that we were trying to get going that fortunately now are going, just kind of all came in at the same time.
That just, the number just stood out to me, so I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll make that second.
Oh, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Our next item is electric aggregation update 2024. Director Wilson?
Thank you. Let me just switch over here. Yeah, so earlier in the fall, representatives from NYMEC, one of which, who is here this evening, Mr. Adam Hoover behind me is here this evening, if there's any questions for him, reached out saying that, hey, the city could potentially look to restart the aggregation program. And the two main focuses on this would either to become an EPA green power community again. We were one a couple of years ago when the city had the contract with Elago where they were buying the, the green energy RECs. So we were a green community. The other one would be potentially a civic grant, which is currently estimated at about $24,000 a year that they would remit to the city, that the city could use for any project or program that the city desired. And as I said, representative from NYMEC had said, you know, is this something we would be interested in doing, either becoming a green community again, or receiving this civic grant contribution. And so we wanted to bring that to the committee this evening for consideration. Also, one point in this is historically, the mailers that had won out to the residents had been confusing and, I don't say problematic, but just led to a lot of phone calls, a lot of questions, things of that nature. So the proposed program this time around would be, you know, like a six-year agreement with three two-year programs. So there would be the initial mailers, and then at the two-year mark, the vendor, you know, would, would, I believe, capture any, any new residents, anybody new in the program. So there would be far less mailers, there would only be the initial mailer going out, and then potentially a mailer at the end. There wouldn't be those mailers going out every year, every two years to the entire city. So there would be a reduction in the mailers as well. Like I said, for the finer points that I would have to defer to Mr. Hoover, who is behind me next to the tree on this side over there. So for any more technical questions on the program itself.
Okay.
So that's why we're just looking for direction as to what the committee, council might, might look to do with this particular program.
Okay. Mayor, please.
Yeah, Brad, when we first started this many years ago, and then there was a significant savings to the residents for doing this. But so if we're going forward, we're going to find out if there's a savings, because we're not even sure if there's a savings to the residents. Is that correct?
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, this, this particular program, the residents would be paying the same as the ComEd rate. So it'll be, I could defer to Mr. Hoover, but yeah.
Yeah, to be clear, we always check for that first. That's the winner of a program. The market just doesn't allow for that. The comments rate is extremely low right now. Like, this month, it's actually five cents, and the current average is around seven or eight cents. So we can't find a supplier that can beat it. That's our number one goal. So that's why we offer this price match program where there's really no change in the resident's billing, and there's no change in the rate. So there would be no virtual change to the resident.
So, okay, so then I have a question, because I, when I read this, I agree 100% that it was very, always very confusing to get offered. So then, is your company, would it lock in a rate for, for a period of time, that two-year cycle?
So the ComEd rate flows from month to month. It's been actually crazy, and I could bore you with details, but just for the sake of this conversation, it's going up and down. So that would be mirroring with any resident that moved to MC squared in this proposed program. So there would be, if the rate goes up to seven cents, that's where the MC squared rate goes. If it goes six cents, the residents would pay. So virtually no change in the resident's rate or their billing.
So then, I guess my question would be, what would be the benefit to doing this?
Yeah. So we, we can't find the benefit for the residents. Well, that's just not available with the fixed rate, which we would love to do, but like I said, it's just not, the market doesn't allow that. So you're either creating renewable energy, about 20 million kilowatt hours, which would put you in the top 50 in the nation with the amount of renewable energy created, or you could kind of choose option B and take $24,000 and put it towards the general fund. You could put it towards a local renewable project. There's, I could give you a lot of ideas of what other towns do, but you just have $24,000 annually. And so over six years, that could be substantial amount.
So by selecting to be a green community, that would, we would get $24,000?
No.
Yeah, with one or the other. You would either choose option A is renewable energy, which comes with no civic contribution, or B comes with a civic contribution and no renewable energy.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Alderman, Artie Wood?
What kind of participation have we had in this program in the past?
Director Wilson, you look like you're thinking about?
Yeah, I could, I could. Thinking, yeah, for Mr. Hoover, because it's changed over the years
Yeah.
For the different programs, so.
About 10% of people, on average, that is not Wooddale-specific, but in the 100 or so communities we've done, it's about 10% traditionally opt out.
Okay, just to follow.
Sure.
To make sure I'm understanding. So this is just for the ability to send out the promotion to the residents? We would get that renewable energy or the dollar amount credit, or does that work?
About 60% of the residents, pretty much residents that don't have the hourly program, any resident hasn't made a decision. So the hourly program, a different supplier, or solar, would have, would be opted into MC squared. They would get a letter, and that's where they would have the ability to opt out if they chose, so choose. A reminder, if they opt in or opt out, they're going to be billed by ComEd, paying the ComEd rate.
The same thing we got before, but we're not committing that any specific percentage of residents are going.
Zero people could do it, and you guys would still get a check of $24,000.
Everyone opts out.
Everyone opts out, you still get your $24,000.
Thank you.
And again, we've had, we've had complaints in the past, you know, would, so if a resident doesn't participate, we're not going to, they're not going to opt out, and nothing changes, right?
You wouldn't opt them back in at the next time, correct, yes.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is, if the resident doesn't want to take part in, in this.
They've opted out.
They're done for the six years and likely further.
So do they have to do anything as far as?
Some resident, yeah. Some residents that would have ComEd would have to, there's a lot of options in house, send a text.
So if they want to stay with ComEd?
Correct.
They have to?
Do something.
Do, there's, they would have to opt out, and they're four options.
We've had complaints like that over the years. I'm sure you remember, Director Wilson, right? So.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I, I believe we had a couple of people, I'm sure NYMEC still has the records that we opted out. And I believe, I can go back through our records, see that we were, I believe, going to opt them out on the front end?
Yep.
And not send them out, and not, not even send them a letter at all. I remember one of the people who we were talking about.
We have a permanent opt-out list. So the ones that are very, the ones that are very angry, we have a permanent opt-out list. It's not as many as you, it's probably about five or 10 residents, but they would not, they would not be included in the program.
Yeah, because it gets confusing, especially to seniors, you know, then, then you have people knocking on the door. Is that going to happen?
I can't control if anyone knocks on the door. No one from MC squared, no one from NYMEC. We do not encourage people knocking on the door. But that's just, you know, cold calls and, and stuff like that. We can't limit that, obviously, but we will not sponsor that.
Director Wilson?
I'd say this program would be mail-only. There'll be no door knocking.
Correct.
German to this particular program.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of things. I mean, we did have, we did have issues with it when we first rolled the thing out. That being said, these alternate energy programs have existed since then and have expanded, so people are more used to seeing different offers, whether it's citywide, village-wide, or just private entities trying to get in there at different levels. So I don't think it's as, going to be as big an issue, especially given you're going to block out those ones that have had the main issue. And I would make a motion to accept the, the program that sends us the green. That's the $24,000. That's my motion.
I'll second that. Are there any other questions? Do we just need a motion or a vote on that?
I do have a question. I have a question.
Go ahead.
We don't have to do this tonight, but it would be my recommendation, because residents will ask questions about this, to not make it seem like it's some sort of slush fund or something. A lot of communities do put the aggregate amount into a specific program, as Mr. Hoover had stated. Whatever that program is here, TBD. But I definitely think by the time we roll out the program, when you get questions from your constituents, you just say, okay, yes, we're using the $24,000 for the generator grant program, or whatever you're using it for. It is nice to have a location for that funding that we can count on every year.
I strongly second that, by the way. That is a thing that we found that's very key.
Mayor, please.
Right, we, we use the money for the generator grant program, but going back to the, the pricing, you said ComEd goes up and down.
Yep.
So right now, so if we do this, when the price goes down, our residents?
Would receive the lower prices.
Oh, so you match.
Correct, yep. If the rate goes up, it goes up. If it matches, there's no change to a resident in the rate.
Okay, because before, there was something that didn't work that way, so.
Correct. Before, we thought we could find savings, which is, I want to clear, that's what we want to do. That's a winner of a program if we could save residents $100. But we just can't do that. So the best we can do is offer this green energy or civic contribution with the price match. There will be no extra cost compared to the ComEd rate.
Alderman, Sino?
Trying to simplify things and maybe someone know this site. So is this kind of like a rebate program? Almost like a Rakuten where it's like, we're buying through you, it doesn't cost me anymore, it redirects me to a site, I pay the same amount on walmart.com, but because you guys are the filter, you're buying an aggregate, or you're like bringing, is it?
Yeah.
You're giving us almost essentially this rebate, quote-unquote, I guess. Like, how do you guys make money? You're obviously not doing it out of the goodness of your heart.
I know, that's the, yeah, that's the frank question. I'll give you a short example. It might be a little, imagine there's two households, right? I use my wife, and I use myself as an example. I run the dishwasher at midnight, and I run the wash at midnight, and my wife will run it at 2:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. She gets everything going, and the heat's always going. We both are charged the ComEd rate. But what MC squared has found out is that they can charge us individual rates. And so there's going to be my wife, that would be a little bit more of expensive of a rate, and I would be at a lower rate. So they are going to garner everyone who they think they can make a profit on, and those people are going to be moved over to MC squared. That's going to be about 50 or 60% of the population. A reminder, both households are making, are being charged the ComEd rate. So there's virtually no difference to the resident, but they're kind of doing an analysis on how they can make profits. And a reminder, if everyone opts out of the program, you guys could still get the $24,000. So it's, they're, they've done a study, and they're kind of, you know, playing a, a game, you know, analysis, trying to figure out the ways to make profits.
I'm good with that game. I just, I just knew it wasn't the goodness of your heart.
Correct.
As long as I know what your business model is, that's great. I'm good with it.
But to be clear, it's $24,000 without anyone being charged an extra cent.
Okay, perfect.
Mayor, please.
So they're going to put everybody in except those dozen or so that always opted out. And then, what, after three months, they might just put some people back to ComEd? What's going to be on the bill? MC squared?
Nope, ComEd. So on the bills, it will be ComEd bill. And I'll be very honest, there's one line that you would never notice that's powered by MC squared.
Right.
People see that on there. But that's going to be the ComEd rate, and virtually people don't even see that. But yes, that would be the only difference in the bill.
So some people would just be pushed back to ComEd and?
Correct.
Is that what you're telling me?
Some people would remain with ComEd if they chose not to, and some would be with ComEd, which is powered by MC squared.
Okay.
Same bill.
Same, exactly. They will, people don't notice. I hate to, but people.
Right, no, they don't. Then, and you know what? Because when we were doing these changes, I had a few people call me, and I'm looking at their bills. Somehow, somebody else got them to switch, and they gave them this rate.
Correct.
And then within six months, the rate was triple what everybody else in town was paying, and they were yelling at me, and I'm like, wait a minute, how'd this happen?
But.
They had, they gave the authorization by mistake. They got confused.
But I would just say, and this is part of the benefits of it, I, I know the letters are part of the issues. I'll give my personal cell phone to the staff to send any resident towards me. So they, I'll take all the calls, just to be clear. But oftentimes, we find that, and it's actually good, because they're getting charged 20, 30 cents per kilowatt hour, and they never knew it. And so we get them into either ComEd or with MC squared. I don't care which one they go to. You don't care which one they go to, but we can remove that from their bill.
Alderman, Currielli?
Yeah, I'm, I'm one of those confused senior citizens.
Sure.
I have.
It's the cold, it's the cold.
I have hourly rate through ComEd.
You wouldn't be impacted.
Am I going to get a mailing?
You would get a mailing that says you're not impacted.
And I could just throw it in the garbage?
You could throw it in the garbage, and you would not be moved over. It gives you the option to move over. And then for six years hypothetically, that's why we recommend a long-term deal, you wouldn't get another notice for six years. That's why we're recommending the longer-term deal, because then in two years, only a small amount of people will get a letter.
Thank you.
Mayor, please.
Yep. Bringing that up, I believe we had a subdivision was all-electric, and their rate was way better than anybody got from ComEd, or, so are they already opted out?
They'd be like the Alderman as well. They would get a letter that says you can join the program, but if you do nothing, you will not be included in the program.
Okay, those people would get a letter to join. Everybody else would get a letter to opt out if they wanted out.
Correct, correct. If you've made a previous decision, like hourly or anything else, solar, a different supplier, you get one of those letters to say you have to join if you want to, where everyone else would get a letter that says.
Okay, yeah, because I, nobody could touch their price back then. It could have changed now.
I would recommend they look at that, but yes.
Okay.
So I have a question. So when would this take place? If, when are you looking for this?
So the, the reason I came to the staff is because in May, there's actually going to be a price spike with ComEd, which allows this program to become more advantageous because they can play the game a little bit better. That's what MC squared says. So we would like a May start, which would mean letters probably go out in February, April.
Okay, so unless I'm one of those 12 people, I'm getting some kind of a letter?
In February, April, yeah.
That I have to?
If approved, yes.
So if I do nothing, then I'm in the program unless I want to opt out?
Correct. If you have not done one of those previous three or four options, but yes.
Right. Okay, so there'll be some, and then a phone number to call with questions?
Correct. And there's an email, and we've, we've made it a little bit easier. You can scan, you can text, you can do a lot more things. And most importantly, I give my phone number to staff. So I'll, I'll talk to any resident.
Perfect. Manager Murmas?
Yes, the, the last time we've done these programs in advance of the actual letter, the city itself would make note to the residents, be prepared, you know, whether it be in the newsletter, social media, you will be receiving a letter from, you know, NYMEC, MC squared, whoever.
Yeah.
This is a legitimate mailer, because we know that there's a lot of scammers out there trying to do this stuff. So we would advertise in advance, letting residents know that the letter coming is a partnership with the city, because I know that's a common question.
Yeah, I would say it would be, because it's not somebody knocking on your door, but it's like, any kind of a contract coming, you just want to know that the city is supporting but it's like, any kind of a contract coming, you just want to know that the city is supporting that. Okay, any other questions? So, Alderman Artwood?
Thank you. Not a question, suggestion that we take that green and apply it to streetlights and streetlight repairs.
And again, we don't have to make a decision on exactly what we're doing with this tonight, correct? It's just discussion.
Except for doing that, then, you know, we're good.
Correct.
I really just recommend before, before the program gets started, that we're all on the same page, so you can tell your constituents what we're using this money.
Okay.
And if it's the lights, then it's the lights.
That's why I brought it up. So there is a story already, otherwise everybody's confused. Sounds like a logical path. Mr. Wilson?
Okay. Okay, thank you. So do we need to make a motion on this?
We have a motion in a second already.
Or just all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, closed.
Hey, do a roll call. I think we got two.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
No.
And Alderman Catalano?
No.
So is that?
That's a tie.
It's a tie.
It's a fancy watches door.
Mayor, please.
Right, I'll go yes.
Okay, and that passes. The next item is grocery tax discussion. Director Wilson?
Yes, thank you. So I'm sure, as you're all aware, the state earlier this year repealed the 1% grocery tax effective January 1st, 2026. For any town that, I'll say this, then I'll give a little, little commentary, any town that would wish to continue to collect the 1% sales tax needs to have the appropriate ordinance down to the Illinois Department of Revenue no later than September 30th of 2025. If towns do not wish to reimpose the grocery tax, then they simply do nothing, and then on January 1st, the tax, that 1% tax goes away. Just by way of explanation, also, the city can change its mind. So if, whatever decision you make before September 30th of next year, if at some point in the future you change your mind, either to add it again or remove it again, you can do that. There are two times a year that IDOR will implement that. That's July 1 and January 1. So those deadlines are April 30th and September 30th. So I guess I'm just saying that whatever decision is made between now and next September or tonight, it's not, you know, it's not set in stone. The city can change its mind at any point in the future, should it so choose to do so. The reasons for before you this evening is, you know, we are getting into CIP and budget preparation, so we're just looking for a little bit of guidance of which way the city council is thinking it might go, or you already know. That way we can prepare the budget and CIP in accordance with the wishes and direction of the council.
Okay, thank you. How much money is it for this 1% tax that we're looking at not receiving any longer?
Sure. Based upon the estimates that we provided to DMMC earlier this year, it's around, we're estimating around $300,000. Unfortunately, we get the sales tax reports from the state, it just says, you know, jewel X amount. So we don't know if that's from qualifying, you know, food taxes, or if that's just from other things. Because, you know, as I'm sure you know, everything you buy jewel doesn't qualify for the food and beverage tax, a lot of stuff that doesn't apply, it gets the high tax, so it gets everything. So unfortunately, we don't have an accurate number from the state, just based upon how they remit the taxes to us. So it's based on, I guess, the estimates that DMMC and IML have come up with kind of how to compute that. So that's our estimate. Like I said, unfortunately, we do not have an actual accurate number to go off of. It's just our estimate is based upon the models that we've been working with.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, please.
Yeah, so I know when I asked you this, you said it could be almost $400,000, so somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. Honestly, the state really kind of stuck at all the municipalities. I don't think we should be putting it back in. I think we need to figure it out, because we're always out, we have to raise fees for everything that these guys do, all these unfunded mandates. I know the DMMC is working with all the other COGS and IML. They're working with, so they're trying to create a deal on the LGDF, right? Right now, we're at, what, six and a half? When they put us down to six, in the past 14 years, we've been fighting with Springfield, and we got to six and a half in 14 years. The COGS and IML are trying to get the state to come to 8%, which would generate close to about, was it 450,000, 500 or so? There's no guarantee we're going to get that, but we've heard that there's some appetite down there, because the deal would be, nobody's going to bother them for five years, basically. But our, the way we figured it is, well, we spent 14 years to get a half a percent. If we get a full percent and a half, it'll be worth it. But I'm not going to bank on that until, you know, because the state's got all kinds of problems. But honestly, I, I just don't like the idea of us having to put that 1% back on, and we should figure it out during CIP and budget.
Alderman Artwood?
So, since we have our staff here, what, what is your recommendation? You guys always have a recommendation, except for when it's bad news, then it's like, whatever we want to do? So as the professionals, what's, what's the consensus? What do you think, what are other communities doing? I get the straight line is yes or no. I don't want to enact the 1%, but the 1% is being paid. So it's not like it's a new thing, right? And that, that continues to be a loss to us in the LGB.
No, no, it's, it's not being paid. It's gone.
But we get it today.
It will be gone.
It will be gone if we decide to get rid of it.
Right, right now, we're getting it.
We instituted it.
Oh, I, I thought you said it was.
The people will not know that there was a change, right? It just continues on. It's once you eliminate it and try to bring it back.
Yeah.
Then you're the, the bad guy. So, Mr. Wilson?
Manager Mermes, did you have a comment?
I was just, I was just going to comment, I'm part of the DuPage Mayors and Managers, Managers Committee, and it's really a mixed bag right now on what different municipalities are doing, from what I'm hearing. Some are saying they're probably going to institute it, some are saying that they're not. Everybody's in agreement, though, that the state really kind of threw a nasty curveball and put a tough decision on us. I would say that, you know, under budget development, if we were to get rid of this tax, I would say that $300,000 in the general fund is, is a rather large amount to lose, and it would probably be, I don't want to say cut in services, but you would have to probably make this difference up with bodies. Now, I'm not talking about laying people off or anything, but if there's retirements, perhaps not rehiring positions, if there's vacant positions, perhaps not rehiring. But that would be a possible option, because $300,000 in the general fund is a lot. We, either way, the council goes, I think we'd be all right. It would just be what, how we would present the budget. So I'd say that, that the staff is good with either way. Obviously, $300,000 is a lot, and that'll have an impact, a major impact.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I would just say, the Alderman Wood said, you know, yes, you are re-implementing it, but if it never goes away, then there's, it's status quo. Again, like the manager said, I mean, you're probably looking at, you know, headcount, you know, largely through attrition at first, and see, see where it goes. You know, I'm a finance guy, you know, we like numbers, we like money, right? So again, yeah, like I said, I think, you know, if you were to direct us to, to implement it, like I said, it's going to be status quo. I think, you know, some surveys we've seen have been anywhere from $50 to $100 for a household for the whole year. That's really what we're talking about. So if you go to the store, you spend $100 a week, if everything qualifies, that's a dollar. So that, you know, and assuming that that's the case, that's $52 a year, assuming that you're spending $100 and everything qualifies. So I mean, it.
And like Alderman Wood said, we're already paying that now anyway, so, you know, to, I wouldn't see a difference, really.
And I think, you know, I would just ask this, I mean, during COVID, the state suspended it, and then the state gave us, they filled that void in there, and when it went back on, I don't know how many of people knew it was gone in the first place or that it went back on. So that's my only comment.
Alderman Artwood?
Yeah, just to do some comparative thought process, I guess, I mean, just a couple weeks ago, we were doing the tax levy, right? We had those questions, what if we don't do this, and how much do we lose? You know, there's, it seems that we continue to fight the battle of losing revenues, whether it's the water fund using less water as the rate goes up, whether it's the local government distributive fund being robbed by the state, right? The state throwing the curveball. At some point, we got to step up, and I think the issue's going to be, if we, we don't, we let it drop, that's going to be a bigger issue. And then, if you think about it compared to other communities now, if I go to Schaumburg, which I go to often to go to a restaurant, or if I go to Oakbrook, they have higher taxes. It doesn't stop me from going there. You'll have everybody coming here to buy stuff, right? Maybe, but there's no benefit to the community as opposed to all the other stores you go to that you would be paying the tax. So I'd be in favor of just keeping it. Nobody's really, really going to know. I mean, that's two, that's a pretty substantial bite to take.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I mean, I'm taking the same perspective, but looking at it differently, and like, people will notice the cut to the services. The reality is, is all the heads, right? Look at where our retirements are coming from, probably PD, so I'm not going to jeopardize public safety, number one. And then two, I'm guessing Public Works, the two people that are sitting here, right? So, no offense, Brad. And so, to me, that, I'm not worth jeopardy, it's not worth jeopardizing public safety, number one. Number two, just the typical Public Works, things that we rely on. I mean, so that's my stance, and so I agree with Alderman Woods.
Mayor Police, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just going to make, regarding to what Jeff was saying, so some communities are not, are home rule communities, and they're raising all kinds of other things. I've seen from utility tax to entertainment tax and all kinds of different, everybody's got a different philosophy. I mean, whoever has grocery stores in town and whatnot.
And I, I agree with Alderman Woods and Alderman Messina that it's something, if we're paying it now, I mean, to take it away and then bring it back, I mean, it's 1%, as you commented, it's $50, $52 a household, and, you know, a lot, it's not a huge impact, but to, you know, potentially lose a quality of service is, that would definitely be seen. So, any other questions or comments? So for tonight, we're just talking about, Alderman Catalano?
So like, for instance, when, when we get these data centers online, or the, the truck dealership, or cannabis, that's down the road, correct? So, you know, if we don't, you know, if we keep that 1%, which I kind of don't like putting 1%, people have to buy food. I, I don't like it when we have to charge them tax on food, but anyway, can we then get rid of that tax? Or, go ahead.
Director Wilson?
Yes.
So we can have some, okay.
Follow up?
Yeah, it does say, so just again, at any point in the future, the way the legislation's